Aaron, if you want to start recording.
All right.
We're ready. Okay.
Great. We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, Mike Bullier. Mike Sharon.
Mike Sharon, Hebron.
Joe Coletti. Kirsten Erlinson. Pam Farrington.
Pam Farrington, Marlboro.
Carrie Fralino. Drew Galfin.
Drew Galfin, Marlboro.
Gabe Marks.
Gabe Marks, Hebron.
Amy Romanchuk.
Amy Romanchuk, Marlboro.
Scott Soyet.
Scott Soyet, Andover.
And Heather Sommer from Hebron. Is Dawn on? Or are you taking?
She'll watch every recording.
Oh, okay.
Eva takes the notes, I think.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Got it. All right. So let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to the public comment portion of the agenda. Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro, community engagement and attendance at BOE public meetings is welcomed. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the BOE may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the BOE is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the BOE is not permitted to engage in a discussion on the comments presented. Is there anybody that would like to make public comment? There's nobody online, just the board. Okay, last call. Somebody scolded us last week. All right. So that will bring us, we're going to start with.
Yeah, so I'll, so I'll just say, I appreciate everybody being here, our department coordinators and directors from different departments. Tonight is our second budget workshop, so we're going to have school counseling, health and phys ed, pupil services, our fine and performing arts, athletics, science, and curriculum in general. Everybody has a PowerPoint who's here and we'll make sure that it is available online tomorrow. I will tell you, we're going to bat a little bit out of order, no sports pun intended, well, I guess it was intended. Dan Trudeau is actually not first in the PowerPoint slideshow, but he's going to go first because he needs to get upstairs to be there to supervise a game that starts off at 6:45. So we're going to start off with athletics. Dan, if you want to come up and get us started, and Aaron's just going to advance to that slide.
Thanks. I appreciate you guys letting me go first. So with my, with my athletic budget, the goals of the budget are essentially centralized around the student experience and, you know, providing our kids with, with, you know, a valuable experience through athletics and a good positive experience through athletics that hopefully, you know, they take some memories with them, they take some, some, some duty with them, some, some want to continue in athletics, whether it be as a, a community member, a coach. You know, some kids will go on to continue their playing careers in, in their respective sports, but, but to stay involved in some way or another because it's a healthy outlet for, for anyone who participates. And that's what we want, and we want people who, we want students, we want to graduate kids from our athletic program who want to give back. So, you know, essentially, I think that's what my goals here and my goal statement sort of summarize on, on my, my slide here. So with that, I will skip to... You could skip one more here. Yeah. Thanks. So again, we're looking at the high school athletic budget. You know, I, I think most of the increases are somewhat incremental and really just due to increase, continued increase costs of, of products we use, albeit transportation, equipment, services such as EMS costs that have gone up, police service costs, officials' costs, all of those things that are generally jumping up a small percentage each and every year. There's, there's really no major jumps, I believe, this year in my budget. Again, just kind of small percentages from, from each of these categories. Is there anything on here that you, you would like me to elaborate on, or?
I have one question.
Sure.
On the middle school side.
Sure.
I know you haven't gotten to that page yet. The difference in general supplies, 3,500 from last budget year to this budget?
Yep. That would be because of cheerleading uniforms, which are the most expensive uniforms to purchase as a, as a group. They're more expensive than football, more expensive than hockey. I found that out unfortunately the hard way a couple of times here at Ram. But, but I will say our middle school cheerleaders have been sort of using recycled down high school uniforms that are in good shape. But next year, it's time for them to get their own set of some good uniforms and, and that is the reason for that kind of significant increase. So. Yes.
You know I'm going there. We've, I, I really have a thing about uniforms that are too tight. So I, I feel like it's an inclusion issue for me that, and I just, and it's not just cheer. I've seen it in other sports where people are tucking down on their uniforms because they're just, they're too tight. We have got to figure out a way to, to find a vendor that can provide larger uniforms, you know.
Yeah, I, I mean, we, we, we try our best to order an appropriate number of uniforms for the amount of kids that we have participating, while also recognizing there's a need that, you know, we, we probably need to purposely buy some extra uniforms in, in additional sizes. You know, it, I know it's come up before. It's, I'd call it kind of a delicate balance between, between not trying to overspend. You know, we're, we're talking about middle school cheerleading uniforms that, that come at a fairly significant cost and, and, you know, I'm, I'm conscious of what I'm spending on these uniforms and what I'm getting quoted on. And so like I said, it's, it's certainly something I'm trying to avoid. I know it's come up. So I'm a little bit more sensitive to it now. You know, as, I'm not sure if you're aware, but I just actually ordered for the high school cheerleading team. I ordered four additional upper size uniforms to kind of prevent that issue from happening or rectify the issue that's, that's happened from the newer uniforms we have up at the high school, but.
That's great. I, I really appreciate that. And I know I order branded stuff for work and it's hard. I know how hard it is. But I appreciate you making the effort on it.
So why aren't cheerleading uniforms more expensive than, say, football and hockey?
Why are they more expensive?
I mean, they don't have pads, right? And helmets and, right?
They're bejeweled.
No, I mean, you know, part of it's because there's a, I'll call it a somewhat monopolized market of, of who makes, you know, high quality cheer uniforms. There's really only probably two to three well-known companies out there that do it. I've never put on a cheerleading uniform, but I have kind of asked the same question to my coaches. And what they've said is the material that, that the uniforms we've bought over the last two cycles, they're really the best material. They, they provide the appropriate stretch, they provide the right comfort that kind of can serve that dual purpose because our cheerleaders have, they really have like two aspects to their season. They have a cheering part of their season and then they have a competitive part of their season, which is really more gymnastic-like. So you want to be able to have that freedom to move around. You know, that's the best explanation to the question I can give. I mean, it's, it's a little bit.
It wasn't obvious intuitively.
No, it's, and the comp uniforms are, they're fancy. And, but they're not, they're not even, I say fancy, it makes it sound like it's decadent. They're probably least fancy than some of the other schools. Like when you go to the competitions, it's, it's a step up from when they're cheering on for the football game.
They have like sequins on them and stuff.
It's, it's crazy.
I don't know. Any other questions for Dan?
Transplantation.
Thank you for your time, guys.
Next, we have Jen Mott and Lori Connors from the school, our school council board.
Hi, good evening.
Sorry.
Thank you. Okay. So based on the school counseling overview, focusing on the first bullet point regarding the fee increase to maintain the middle school second step program, this is really only the, only increase that's added to the middle school budget this year. And it's a very small one of approximately $270. That's just to maintain the program and we anticipate just with, with everything, just a little increase with the, our vendor saying there's going to be an increase anticipated. So that's to offset that cost. Our second bullet point focuses on continuing to provide the college and career readiness programming. So if you were to look at the high school counseling budget, there's a increase of approximately $350 to maintain and support that. We take pride in offering at least two major events during the school year, one being our college and career fair that we host in the fall. That's the consortium between Bolton High School and Bacon Academy. So it's a traveling situation that day. So this past fall, we had almost 80 colleges representatives that attended. We had, you know, 15 career training representatives as well and five branches of the military. So it's a great opportunity for our students. So again, we need to provide refreshments as we host that event. And then in the late winter, early spring, we also have a career day. We had 11 different business professionals that came in and we hosted that event for our grade 10 students. So that was also a success. So again, we just kind of anticipate a little bit of inflation with hosting those events. So that's what that light item number is, is focusing on. The third bullet point is continuing to provide student and families financial support for going dual enrollment course opportunities. We anticipate we're going to be offering seven new dual enrollment courses this fall. So again, anticipating any needs historically, and actually most recently, I should say, we've received invoices to help pay for those and they've been approximately $2,500 per semester. So we take that 2,500 times two, that's where you're getting that $5,000 increase. So that's really the major component to the change in our high school budget. And then again, just continue to provide and maintain our partnerships with our community organizations to provide the financial and other SEL resources for all of our students as we focus on group and individual counseling and we provide academic and mental health support.
What's the second step program?
It's from the middle school. They use it as a supplemental program to Navias. It involves multimedia videos, a lot of advisory lessons. The counselors use it when special circumstances come up and they have to draw from other material.
Thank you.
Any questions?
What's the SEL resources again? SEL?
So the community resources?
Yeah.
They, we, we've used the churches, the Hunger, Hunger Action Team, AHM.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you want to just go through the next, like the middle school slide, high school slide?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Just.
Okay. Yep. So the middle school budget slide, again, just showing that one difference in the software that is connected to that second step program and everything else remains the same. So it's a differential of $271. And then on the high school side, small increases per light item, you know, everything ranging from maybe $50 to $100. But again, that one light item that definitely is glaring is that $5,000 to help the need for the dual enrollment programming.
Any other questions?
That's great. Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Dylan Belanger for Health and Phys Ed.
Good evening. First, I'm just going to touch upon a couple of similarities that you'll see amongst the middle school and high school. And then I'll go into details with specifics with middle school and high school. So for both schools annually, we need to replace consumables due to regular wear and tear. We have a specific one that I'm going to go over at the middle school in a little bit. And then the continuation for the availability to have guest speakers come into our classrooms to enhance learning and motivation. Students really enjoy seeing someone, a fresh new face come into our classes to meet our curricular goals. At the middle school specifically, our main expenditure you'll see is seated scooters. We need to replace 50 of them that are currently 20-plus years old and that are breaking. So that's in the instructional supplies line item. And then the continuation of nutrition and healthy food preparation for our personal wellness courses for each quarter. We're asking to continue with that. So that number stays the same. And I'll point those out when we get to that next slide in a minute. But continuing with just going over a few things with the high school, just to maintain, we're asking to maintain safety in the weight room with service and repair. We do services twice a year and then we have extra funds for anything that needs to be repaired. And then also continuing to provide CPR certifications for all incoming freshmen. That's also found in the instructional supply line item. And then for the equipment line item, our teachers are asking for two Bluetooth speakers to use where they can use it either inside the building or outside with their students. We are discontinuing our current software program, but we are asking for an additional transportation line item for a field trip to a ropes course with our adaptive physical education class. So if you take a look at the middle school budget, you will see the scooters. That's what's increasing the middle school instructional supplies for those additional repairs or replacements, I should say. And then everything else is pretty much the same as last year. Going over to the high school budget, you'll see that there's the PE software discontinuation, but additional transportation of 388 for that field trip that we have planned. And just a little increase due to the CPR certifications with anticipation of roughly 20 more students from Columbia coming into Ram. Any questions?
I have one. Tell me about the seated scooters.
Yeah, I was going to say, what are those?
So it's a favorite unit. We do a lot of different things on the scooter, scooter handball, scooter scoops. It's kind of like bringing back their elementary days at the middle school here. They really enjoy it. And they're just getting to the point where we're constantly replacing the wheels or the seats are breaking and it's just hard to maneuver it around the floor. So they would love the new ones.
So are these like just, like skateboard sized scooters?
They're like a square.
Okay.
Low profile scooter that they sit on. And there's side handles and they, it's a great leg workout. Constantly moving your legs to get around everywhere.
Does it steer?
You steer with your legs and the handles.
Okay. Sounds like fun.
Yeah.
Keeps them engaged.
Yes, it does.
Not be fun on mine.
Should have brought one with you.
No, I shouldn't.
Maybe the next student program spotlight, we'll get everybody on the board. Scooting around here.
That's on standby.
Thanks, Jen. Appreciate it very much. Next, we have Christine Hartwig, who is our Director of Pupil Services.
Good evening, everybody. So the first slide, go ahead. So a couple of different things make up the special education budget. So it says pupil services, but really I'm, I'm the other half of pupil services. Jen and Lori presented school counseling. So we're really going to be talking about special ed. So the first component that makes up the budget is the support for current programming, services, and student needs. Those are things like general supplies, assessments, programs, equipment such as hearing devices that students may need while here at school. The second component is support for out-of-district programming. And that includes, we have students who require services past their four years of high school. So that's our postgraduate programming. We do plan for some of that here at Ram, but we like to give students, when they get to a certain age, some different opportunities and experiences outside of the district, in different communities, different employment opportunities. So we have a couple of students who attend different programs for that purpose. We also have students who are participating in out-of-district programs due to need the, their, whether it be their social, emotional, behavioral, whatever it may be, they require a more supportive and restrictive environment that we can offer here at Ram. We do everything we can to bring them back here when they're ready, but, you know, that, we, you know, every year, there's going to be a couple that we're still going to need that. And then we have our students who choose to attend magnet and agri-science schools. And this is a little bit trickier because this is a family slash student choice, not a Ram choice. So it's a little bit of a moving target each year because we are not sure who's attending those schools until the summer before school starts. So we do our best to plan based on who's already attending those programs that may need specialized instruction through special education for 504 plans. And the third component is transportation, and that would be in-district transportation. So students who require specialized transportation to get to and from Ram, students who need out-of-district transportation, so they need to get to their programs that we've outplaced them to. Or we also need to transport our students during our summer extended school year program. So that's what makes up the transportation there. The next slide will summarize our budget plan for next year. So good news is that you're going to see a lot of reductions for next year. So I'll talk about a little bit in each area about why that may be. And the one component that's going to be a little bit increased. The, the first is student tuition. And this is projected to decrease next year, and that is due to a decreased need for out-of-district placements. The, we did recognize late last week that we had budgeted only for partial tuitions for our magnet and agri-science students. So we made that adjustment today. So the slide is going to be a little bit different than what the actual amount is. For those of you math people, the new decrease in that line is 584,794,000. So we were just off, when we, when we did budget for 100% of tuition as opposed to the reduced tuitions, we were off by 15,378. So it was just a matter of budgeting for partial versus full tuitions. So that'll just be a little different. But the decrease is again due to decreased need in out-of-district placements. And just to kind of review that, this year, we currently have 19 students who are participating in out-of-district programs, six for postgraduate, six for out-of-district for need, and seven who attend magnet or agri-science or other public schools. For next year, we're projected to have 17 students. So five postgraduates, six for need, and six projected to attend magnet or agri-science schools. So it makes a big difference.
Could you say that breakdown one more time?
Sure.
Six, seven for budget?
So you're talking the numbers for the.
The 19 that you have in the current budget?
Yep. So 19 this year, we have six who are in postgraduate programs, six students who are placed out of district in different programs for need, and seven who are choosing to attend magnet or agri-science schools.
Are there significant differences in cost between those three categories, you know, for people?
Yes, yes, there is. You're, the added, the students who are attending out-of-district programs, as magnets seem are, tend to be a little bit lower cost than are your out-of-district programs. And even your out-of-district programs vary by, you know, the type of services they offer, how intensive those may be. So there's a significant, can be a significant difference between, from program to program.
Thank you.
Yep. The second line on the, back on the chart is PPS services. This is the one area that is seeing an increase for next year. And that's mostly due to the fact that we need to bring in our contracted physical therapist in for another half a day just due to student need. Right now she comes in one day a week and we need a day and a half just to meet those needs. Student transportation is the next line and we're, we are seeing a decrease. We were, we're hoping, we were hoping to see more of a decrease, but unfortunately, our, our primary specialized transportation company had to raise their rates this year and next year. So we saw a 7% increase overall, which is a bit higher than normal. So while we do have a significant cost savings there, you know, we were hoping to see more, but that's, that's where we're at. And then supplies and equipment, repair and maintenance, the other category, those are all projected to decrease. And we were able to just reduce amounts in those areas just with a review of how we're spending money and what, what is needed. And then our extended school year program, or I would say money spent out because we do use some of those funds to pay for students who are in out-of-district programs. That's expected to decrease and that's mostly due to reduced transportation need because we have a couple of students who are exiting because they've reached age 22 or are graduating this year. So overall, and again, this is going to be a little bit different than the slide, we are now at 2,727,479. And that is a difference from last year of, again, new number, 553,200. And so we're experiencing quite a decrease, which is great. And then in addition to this being lower than last year, it's also lower than our 23, 24 approved budget by about $184,000. So we are in good shape heading into next year. Any questions?
That's a very important thing.
Yeah.
I have one question. I don't remember it being broken out, but is the transportation in your budget, has it always been separate from our traditional busing contract?
So yes, we're considered specialized transportation. So what you may picture as like a van going to students' houses and doing door-to-door transportation as opposed to a school bus who would transport.
Totally different company.
Totally different company in this case, yes.
Thank you.
And the extended school year, what, do all the students who need special health take it? Or is it just a few? Who's involved in, or how is that?
Yeah. So we determine that based on, so you're looking at whether students are going to regress over the summer with their skills. And it could be academic, could be social, emotional, things like that. So not every special education student participates in that, but those with more significant needs would.
And when you say extended, is it through the whole summer?
It's three full weeks in July.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah. Any other questions? Great. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Next, we have Ms. Fisher, who will talk art and music.
Good evening. So I'm going to talk a little bit just about our general, overall of our program and some of our goals. We continue to offer a robust selection of classes. We really try and make sure that we're staying competitive with magnet schools. So the specialty programs, we offer better programs than they do. So our kids stay with us. It's really helped us having the high school class at the middle school because we're able to catch a lot of those kids and see the ones that we might lose to magnet schools and expose them to our program at the high school. And we've been able to really retain them and make them stay with us. We have introduced the entry level classes up at the high school for keyboarding and guitar. We ran two sections of our guitar class this year. So we start to see more kids who are able to be introduced to music at the high school that wouldn't have been usually because they're not in band or chorus. So that's been really important for us. We've added several dual enrollment classes in art this year that were run for the first time. We did have the ECE class through UConn, but now we have other classes that run through Eastern and through Three Rivers. Our journalism class is going to be adding a video component. We haven't had a video component for students to work from since we had the video program that we lost when Paul Bancroft moved to doing the EMT work. So you'll see some equipment coming in, in a line item to buy video cameras and microphones, but we were also able to get a grant this year to buy several of those cameras ahead of time and have already started working with those. We continue to be recognized as the best community for music and we continue to expand into the community through our Evening the Arts, our Coffee House programs. And then having students go from the music program and the art programs through N A H S to work the Colebrook or to work in our elementary schools or to go out caroling. So always trying to engage our community through parts of music. So looking at things. For the middle school music budget, the only place where we're really seeing significant decrease is in equipment. Equipment changes every year. And it depends on what they're asking for. It might be a tuba or this year it's euphonium. So it's less than it was when we needed three tubas. The equipment line item always changes every year. So we see a significant decrease there just because they haven't asked for equipment in there. Instructional supplies, we always increase a little bit just because we are always trying to remain copyright compliant with sheet music that we buy and those cost more each year. Dues and fees have stayed the same because we're, they're in a pretty much a set pattern as to what events they do. We're not seeing much change with those. And transportation costs have gone up a little bit, but that we always budget for a little bit more, but they've stayed relatively the same too, again, because we're doing the same programs, going to the same places. So they've stayed fairly stable. Music at the high school, we see the same thing. Some increases across professional services. We're having some visiting musicians come in next year. So we have seen a little increase in that. Repair and maintenance, instructional supplies, it's the same, just kind of the cost of living, everything's gone up. We see a decrease in our equipment, but that's the same as it would be for art. It's just they've asked for different things this year. Dues and fees, we saw a little increase at the high school just because of the programs that they do. There's been a slight increase in those. And our software has gone down a little bit just because we have less students in the school. So we have less students using programs like Notefly and Smart Music. So we have, we have less subscriptions. Art at the middle school is again fairly stable. We see some small increases, but they're just cost of living increases for instructional buys and repair and maintenance. Other than that, it's staying fairly stable. We did add a software item, line item this year that we had not requested before. That's to start introducing the middle school digital classes to a program called Dragonframe for animation. So to help them just kind of segue into the animation program up at the high school. So to build those skills. We have a really strong graphic design teacher at the middle school who has a background in animation. So it's nice for her to be able to start incorporating those skills in there. And then our, the high school repair and maintenance is a little less. We did a major kiln recoil this year. But next year we only need to replace the lid on it. So we see our general maintenance, but other than that should come down. Instructional supplies are a little bit more. We have some. When we budget for equipment, it's always things that are over $300. So anything that's less than that goes into instructional supplies. So we have several non-digital cameras that are less than that. So they're in our instructional supplies, which would usually just be consumables. But now we see an increase in there just because we need some smaller equipment items that will go into that category. So that's where our increase there is. And then in the equipment, you can see we have the, a jump there with the difference in that's for those cameras that we were able to buy four of this year. We still need to buy two more for next year so that the kids can work in teams on creating those segments that will be linked in the magazine through QR codes. So you'll be able to scan it with your phone on the magazines or the newsletters and watch the video content that the students have created. Transportation for us, dues and fees, we see a little increase, but that's just the world that we live in. Questions for me? I cover a lot of ground with my departments.
Oh, you did a great job of it.
Thanks, Doug. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to skip ahead a couple of slides in our presentation. Penny is stepping in for Alexa Mitchell, who is off for a bit of time, enjoying a new member of her family. And Penny's going to talk a little bit about the science department budget.
Good evening. I'm not a former science teacher. I'm a former English teacher, so be gentle. So basically the goals of the department are to maintain equipment in both schools, cleaning and repairing of equipment. Middle school is continuing to do development of the state adopted and G S S aligned open S I E D units. So with that comes some costs. Middle school is also looking to support their national science bowl competition. And we also want to provide lab materials and supplies for all students to fully engage in science practices. Oh, I should have pushed that. Sorry. Experimentation and engineering. And also to maintain field work, experiential learning opportunities, competitions and field trips. The good news is there are no big asks this year. So you'll see the science budget for the middle school has gone down by over $3,000. One of the things that happened last year is that they were buying new materials and textbooks and instructional supplies for the switch to open S I E D. And so since those purchases were made last year, they don't need to be made this year. But the middle school is adding a transportation, adding $1,400 to transportation because they want to have a field trip to the arboretum, which I've learned that new word today. A place where they can observe a variety of habitats, plant life, living organisms and other such things for our middle schoolers. Think that's part of the inquiry group. So any questions about any of that for middle school? High school, you'll see a significant drop where we are asking 11,993 dollars less than last year. There are no new asks with textbooks and they did have this last year. So that's why there's such a decrease there. We have no new asks for equipment. So everything's up to date and does not need to be replaced. And then we also have less needs in transportation because there are fewer field trips, not because we don't want them, but because their situations have changed. For example, Red Cross no longer offers field trips. And, or the field trip that they, they no longer have that happening. And I should say also there's trips to Jackson Labs, which has changed to no longer having high schoolers visit. So just a few things taken out of that line as a result and nothing else of note. Any questions on that?
Where's the arboretum?
It's in Connecticut somewhere. UConn.
Oh, it's at UConn.
Sorry. Listen, I had to learn how to even pronounce that today. I was proud of myself for pronouncing it correctly. So perhaps I need to go with them and check it out, see what it's all about.
Well, that might increase the transportation costs.
I'm sorry.
That might even be transportation.
Oh, right. If I go, yes. For my mileage. I do not know why. I just know Alexa told me that. Yeah.
I could certainly get responses though.
We don't allow high school students in either. All the college kids come in, but not high school. It's just a huge thing.
Yeah, it could just be that.
But they used to do it. So I'm curious about why the change.
Yeah, who knows? I mean, it could be various reasons, could be maybe their protocols have changed or expectations. Yeah, I think Alexa would be able to clearly answer that question. All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Nice job.
Well, I think you have a future in science.
I thank Alexa for prepping.
Last, we have Mary Rose Newton. She's going to talk a little bit about the curriculum.
Good evening. I'm glad I didn't have to go after Dan. Okay. So the curriculum budget is essentially designed collaboratively. So we, each coordinator, each department coordinator takes some time in the fall and looks at their department and tries to identify courses that need to be written as a new course. If they're very old, they need to oftentimes be redone or to be revised, which we've been able to do quite often as well. After they do that, we meet and we decide how we can prioritize. Sometimes we decide to stack them between the years. So we're not doing them all in one year. There's an assessment of what courses might need to be updated, also based on new state standards. The state has been coming out with new content standards each year and also new technologies. And so we try to take that into consideration as well. We also need to plan to write curricula for new courses that are being added to our course offerings. We identify any possible grant funding that could help defray the cost of the writing of the curriculum. Sometimes a title four grant will meet the, the needs of a particular curriculum that we want to write. Or we had the dual enrollment grant, which was wonderful last year that helped to defray the cost of several of the courses that we were writing. And we also consider the N I S C accreditation visit will be coming up next year at the high school. And curriculum is a huge area of focus and evaluation. So we want to keep in mind that our curriculum needs to be up to date and written in a way that they want to see. And then we also have the availability and willingness of people to write because our, our faculty write the curriculum. It's the person who's teaching the course or has taught the course along with coordinator or working in conjunction with me. And so that's another factor that goes into our budgeting. So the big finish, one line. So last year we budgeted 2,000, or 22,740 dollars this year, 20,400. We're writing close to the same amount of courses, but we have some half year courses which cost less. We have some courses that we teach at both the middle and the high school. So it's almost like getting a two for one. And so that's, so we have a decrease then between last year and this year of 2,340.
Mary Rose, I have a question.
Yes.
What happens when it, with dual enrollment classes? Do you partner with the colleges to develop their curriculum?
The wonderful part about most of the dual enrollment that Bev was discussing tonight, we don't have to write curriculum because we send them our curricula. And we say, this is what we do. And by and large, the colleges say, oh my gosh, that's what we do too. And so we don't have to rewrite or revise. And that's generally been the situation. There are a few. There are a few where we've had to, they don't provide us as much, but they provide material. So UConn English, we had to write something because it's such a unique course that we had to write that a few years ago and then revise it when they changed theirs. But by and large, the, the colleges look at what we do. As a matter of fact, Eastern has asked to use our communications to 30 curriculum as a model to share out with other districts. So, so it's nice that what we have written for the most part is very strong. And so it's been, it's been much easier for us to be approved by the colleges for dual enrollment as well.
For, for classes that are required by the state and have state mandated topics for the curriculum. Is there coordination across the Connecticut schools at all? I mean, how, or is every school trying to create their own syllabus that fits the mandates from the state?
So it's really interesting. The state now has a site that they have the standards and then they have a model curriculum that they call. We, for example, we rewrote our grade eight and there is a state grade eight model curriculum. That was okay, but we, we wanted to make sure it was, like the learning plan was very detailed, that there was really explicit directions or directives that if a new teacher came in and had never taught the class before, they would be able to access that curriculum and really understand how to teach from it. And that's really the goal, to make sure that what we put in our curricula is, is workable and is something that a new teacher could teach from or use it as, as a very clear guide to what our expectations are.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had two. One, I'm just curious about what courses are taught both at the middle and the high school? The same course, the same curriculum?
So for example, the one that we're writing this year is Spanish one. So yes, the, the students at the, and also the course Bev was talking about, we have some courses where eighth graders, algebra is another one, are able to take the course and earn the high school credit when they are in the middle school in eighth grade. And so there are several courses where there is that alignment. And so we want to make sure that the students in the middle school are getting that same experience that the students are taking it in the high school. So if, for example, Spanish one course we offer in the eighth grade, we also offer to students that they don't take it in eighth grade, they can take it when they're in the high school. So I'm making sure that those are aligned. Another question?
The, the other thing I, I had was, I, I would. I've never seen curriculum as, as they're written, how they're used. I, I think it'd be great if the board got to see, not all of them, we don't need that, but a sample, you know, that shows, you know, this is how we do a curriculum.
Yeah, we, we use, we use universal, universal design, so backwards design, U B D, so that, that when we plan, we're planning big picture. So that the kids know why we're doing what we're doing, what kind of things we want them to take away from the class. Not just the, I can add this, but what big picture life lessons that will transfer across all of their, their courses. And then again, it, it drills down to skills that we want them to have, we want them to master. And then how, how we want to get them there. So it's a backwards design, but I can, we can certainly, yeah, share something.
Yeah, we'll talk to Colin about this at some point. I just, I, I think it'd be great if, you know, we got the students spotlight. I'd love at some point just to see, here's what our teachers are doing. Here's, you know, here is, I don't know what the artifact is. Is it a document? Is it a website or whatever? But you know, here, here's what we're doing for Spanish one or whatever, you know, for, you know, curriculum. And just, just so we can see how it's done.
You can look up understanding by design and see sort of what the template looks like. It's pretty standard. And it's the one that the state, it's also the one that the state uses. So we, we made sure we went, we had migrated from that for a short time and we brought it back because it aligns with what the state has there and it's excellent. So what, it's, it's terrific. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Rose. Thank you. So we'll do the same thing we did last week, which is if there's any questions, just general questions for our presenters. If not, we'll maybe let them take their leave and then we can kind of go through some general conversation. I could get a couple of questions that we should have. Thanks so much, guys, for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. So I did get a few questions prior to the board meeting that I have some information that I wanted to share. The first one actually came, I think at the last workshop and we were able to put together information. It was from Drew. It was around information about Voag and agri-science. Those are the same things. I apologize. Agri-science and magnet school enrollment. In your budget book, it provides details about enrollment for magnet and agri-science schools, but only up, it, it doesn't provide our current enrollment, nor does it provide our anticipated enrollment for the following year. The reason that we do it that way is because magnet and agri-science enrollment is, is a bit of a moving target. And what I mean by that is it can change. So in our current year, we might, tomorrow we could have a So in our current year, we might, tomorrow, we could have a family show up to the high school and say, my student has been enrolled at a magnet school, I'm going to withdraw them for whatever reason, and they're going to move their student in. And from a special ed perspective, it could be a PPT decision could be made that a student has moved out of a program or into a program. So there's a whole host of reasons why that's a bit of a moving target and why we historically have not provided that data, because when we give information in the budget book, we really want it to be accurate and we like to obviously share the information. So with regards to how it works for predicting how many students are anticipating, how students are going to go from one year to the next, is, on the regular ed side, we simply roll up. And what I mean by that is if you have nine students who are in ninth grade in magnet and agri-science, you just anticipate that they're going to, they're going to roll up. And so you'll have those nine students as sophomores, and we'll just do that in each successive grade. If you don't have any idea if a student is going to go do either VOAG or agri-science, we will anticipate, we will anticipate a rough idea. So for example, this year, we actually don't have any seventh or eighth graders in magnet schools or obviously they're not in VOAG because VOAG is only for high school students. So what we've done for a placeholder is we've put seven students enrolled for next year as ninth graders. We also did put some students anticipated for possibly going into eighth grade as well. But again, that's a bit of a, it's a bit of a guessing game because we just don't quite know. Those other students, we roll up. On the special ed side of things, they, they have a bit of a better idea of whether or not students are going to continue to stay in agri-science or VOAG because they're having PPT meetings, they're having conversations with parents that take place that we just don't have that level of, of knowledge with, with students that are not involved in special education. So I know I'm throwing a lot of information at you. I do have a chart that what I'll do in the next day or so is I'll, I'll share the, I'll, I'll copy this chart, paste it into an email and just push it out to you guys so you can actually see it. I think that'll be, that'll be more helpful. And then I also have the projected tuition cost for this year, and then I have the anticipated tuition cost for next year. You're going to see a very big difference in, in those costs. And the reason for that is because of the fact that we know that this year, the state funding for magnet and agri-science did come through. So we're, we're paying for 58%. The state funding is paying for the remaining 42%. I got that right, 40? Yes, okay. I always forget if it's 42 and 58 or 52 and 48. So for next year, we, we just haven't had any assurances from the state that funding will be available. So we are being cautious. This was a decision that was made by all the regional, the region eight superintendents from Andover, Hebron, Marlboro as well, that we're, we're going to again budget for the 100%. Obviously, we'll be, we'll be happy if the state funding comes through again, but we'd rather, yeah, be in a, well-positioned to be able to.
I think we have to be right now.
Yeah, yeah, no kidding. So I'll just kind of go through.
Before, before.
Yeah, please, please, go for it.
Because I do, I got a little confused about this because there's the 58%, 42%. Or is that just the regular students or is that all the students? Because then there's the excess cost above four and a half times.
Yep.
So if a special ed student goes to a magnet school, is the reimbursement different? Or is that still the 58%?
It comes out of, what comes out of our pocket to pay for the student. So if the tuition, transportation and the services are four and a half times more than the per pupil cost that the state assigns us based on our expenditures and the calculation they do up there. If it's four and a half times that, we're allowed to put the child in a category that's called excess cost. I'm unfamiliar with, and Christine can probably correct me, if anyone at a magnet school or VOAG school would qualify for excess.
But theoretically, it could, right? Right? So you get, you get.
Typically, the cost of the high enough, you have to qualify.
Okay.
The excess cost is typically for those outplacements that Christine was talking about.
That's why I got confused because there's two sources of, yeah, okay.
I mean, you know, you're, you know, the magnet and agri-science tuition could be in the, you know, few thousand dollars. The, the outplacements that Christine was alluding to before could be 30, 40, 50, $60,000. I mean, there's a, there's a big.
Makes sense, yeah. That's why I got, I got a little confused because there's these two buckets, but you have the special ed students involved.
Because they can attend whatever schools they want.
Exactly, yeah.
So again, I received an email that I'll, I'll just kind of go through. And if anybody has any clarifying questions that they need to have answered, we could do our best. There was a question about the furniture maintenance line. Is that the ending number, 733?
Yeah, sure.
So, so asking about the increase of $76,814 seems high, especially, it was noted that there's furniture included in the capital budget as well. This is obviously an operating budget and different. The furniture is in the capital budget, if I'm remembering correctly, is student desks and chairs. The, the furniture that is in the operating budget is, is really primarily for furniture for, for different purposes. So at the middle school, I will tell you that the, the staff chairs, the office chairs are in, in tough shape. We've been very fortunate that we've got Pratt and Whitney to donate a number of high-quality office chairs that we've used in conference rooms and a variety of places. But there's 22 new office chairs that are in this year's budget or next year's budget. And that is to provide those for staff who are in need of, of updated chairs. There's also, at the middle school, there's a reception desk for the safety and security officers. So that's, there's three safety and security officer positions. We're anticipating putting a reception desk at the, at the main entrance of each building and having essentially a place where they would come in, they'd check IDs, they would print the visitor label. We're also going to put a computer system up. And one of the things that the safety and security monitors are going to be able to do as they are helping with visitor management access or visitor access, they're also able to keep an eye on security cameras, which obviously, really, there's a lot of security cameras in the buildings. So we would have one of those at each building. At the high school, there's a number of pieces of furniture that are in the budget for the art department that is going to increase their ability to organize their, their materials and goods. As you can imagine, art classes have tons and tons of materials and goods that they utilize for their students and storage is tough. And so there are cubbies and benches that are intended to increase the storage for those materials and goods. There's new tables and stools for some of our art classrooms, as well as new tables and stools for, for science classrooms at the high school as well. So that's the totality of the, the, those furniture pieces that have increased that budget line. There was a question about the fuel, the diesel fuel for the school buses. The budget line ending in 626, it is down a bit. And the question was, why did it go down? This is the fuel for buses. The way that it works, and Eva will certainly jump in and correct me if I'm, if I misrepresent this, but we actually, it's because the towns lock in a price at diesel rate. They, they lock it in at a certain time when they believe that it's the right time to lock it in. So when those towns lock in the, the lower diesel prices, and all three of them have locked in the prices at a lower rate for next year, that's currently. So it's, it's just, it's good fiscal management. There was a question about pupil transportation, the lines ending in 510 and 513. The question, first one was, does 5, does 510 include all the costs associated with picking up students and dropping them off at school? The answer to that question is yes, it does.
Except for fuel.
Yeah, yeah, correct. It, it does also include though, it's not just picking up students to and from school. It is, it also includes transportation costs associated with field trips as well. And then 513 is only for special education out of district placement transportation. So Drew, there was a, the, the next question I, I needed clarification on, I could certainly get you offline. It's under maintenance, under repairs, maintenance and athletic facilities. You ask about an increase of $500,000. Is explained by the list that totals $300,000. What is driving the other 200,000 of cost increase?
Right, so on page 35 of the board book.
25 or 35?
35.
Okay.
There's, there's the list, electricity being the biggest one, 174,000. That totals to about 300,000, but the actual change is like 500,000. So I was curious what some of the other big items might have been.
So again, so this is a question we're probably going to have to ask Michael because Michael just put in his highlights.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so.
But there, there must be some, some big ones to get to the other 200,000.
Either that or it's a lot of little ones.
Yeah, okay, but we, whatever it is, just curious.
Yeah, we can get clarification from Mr. Schleyhoff about that. That's not a problem. The next question was about grants. The grants on page 45 and 40, 44 and 45, they don't cover, that, that, those are costs that are obviously not part of our operating budget. It does fund things that obviously we use for a variety of purposes. And your question was, if, is it a supplemental source of income? Yes, is the short answer. And if we didn't get that supplemental source of, of funding, would we have to budget for those things? And the answer is yes.
Yeah, okay, because Scott actually sort of, when he asked the question about the grants, made me think of that question, which was, are these grants doing things that we would probably have to do if they weren't covered by the grants? And some of it obviously is.
That's, I'm worried about that.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, yeah, because of what's going on, yeah.
Well, and even, even if they're state grants.
Right.
If pressures put on the state.
Absolutely.
To fall in line, we're going to have to figure out where to find that one.
Yeah, I, I mean, the truth of the matter is, anytime a school district becomes reliant upon state funding in any way, shape or form, you're really rolling the dice, right? It is, it is not, I, it is not an uncommon thing for the state to levy mandates onto schools and districts. And they say, all right, you're going to do this. It's a new requirement, you must do it. And we say, okay, and they say, but we're going to pay for it. Our response generally is to kind of roll our eyes and go, okay, well, how long is that going to last for? Because what often happens is they'll fund, they'll fund the mandate, i- if they fund the mandate. There's a lot of times where there's just unfunded.
Early votes.
But they'll fund the mandate for a short period of time and then eventually reprioritize things and say, well, we can't continue to fund that. Okay, great, does the requirement or the mandate go away? Oh, no, no, it doesn't do that. So, so, you know, that's, it's, it's one of those things where, you know, we will oftentimes proactively, and, and we do this a lot with the special education IDEA grant, will, you know, we'll utilize funding through the IDEA grant to create programs or positions or help fund programs and positions. But then we might pull, we might pull those, pull funding out of the IDEA grant or take away, not fund it with the ID grant and put it into our operating budget. We did that, I think, last year with a, a school psychologist. And, and so it was partially funded by the district, partially funded by the grant, but now it's being fully funded. So it's, it's kind of like a, you're moving things around to make sure that you can still have those things. Because the last thing we want to do is have the grant funding not be available. And all of a sudden, we have to say to somebody, hey, we can't do that anymore, or we can't afford you anymore. That's a bad place to be.
Yeah.
So question about athletics, athletic grounds, groundskeeping supplies, six, which ended in 600, appears as a new expense. It's not a new expense. It was actually reclassified from another area. So there was some reclassification going on. And, and the reason we do that is because it's important to try to accurately classify things. And when you look at something and you go, well, that's not quite an accurate classification, we'll, we'll make those changes.
Before you go on, Pam, Pam has her hand raised in the chat.
Oh, my, my apologies.
That's, that's okay. I didn't, I didn't want to interrupt. I just wanted to just comment because at our, at Marlboro Elementary's board meeting just last week, this came up also about funding and grants and so forth, and just the concern that schools have moving forward. So it's, it, it's kind of common across the board right now as to, you know, how things will work. I know our superintendent, Dr. Hageman, is in constant contact with the board attorneys just to kind of keep updated. There's a lot of moving parts to this, so I'm sure Colin, you are also.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, it's definitely a, a interesting time we're finding ourselves in.
Right, exactly. Things are changing quickly and all schools are really in the same position. You know, we, we, we expect this funding, we've counted on it. And, and you know, Colin said the, you know, the unmandated, the, the unfunded mandates are kind of the, the joke in education. But there are ones that are always funded that we count on. And right now, we're not, just not sure how things will, will proceed. So it's across the board, obviously.
So the next question that, that dealt specific, more specifically with the excess cost grant.
Let me interrupt you there because you answered the next two questions.
Okay.
Except for one little thing.
Okay.
So do we have in the special ed budget a provision for a recoup above four and a half? Or are we not?
So, so, so our provision, so the state is supposed to, so they're supposed to fully fund excess cost, right? Our budget is reflective of 60% of excess cost.
Oh, okay.
So, so, correct, that's the correct percentage?
So, and that's, you find that in the revenues, that dollar amount that you're quoting there, that 544,000.
Okay.
So anything above that four and a half percent, we total that down. And then we take 60% of that number and that's how we get to the revenue number.
Okay.
So.
So that's come down because in the past, so again, it's a very volatile number because it depends on the state's funding position and the student itself.
Right.
If they're going to stay in, go out, you know, be more expensive or be less expensive, depending on how things are going for that student. So we're, so the state went to a new system where we're supposed to be tiered and our tier is supposed to get 70%. And so for the past two years, we have not achieved that 70%. And because of the climate that we're in, I took it down to 60%.
Okay.
You said there were two questions or?
Yeah, the, the next two bullets were, they're related.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So I already talked about the, the 58 versus the 100 for the, for the.
The VOAG and all that, yeah.
So the next question was, you know, there are, dealt with the staffing specifically. Board members will remember that I did indicate that we eliminated two unfilled para, para educator vacancies. But there's still an increase of 169, 135. So that is not just paraeducators within that budget, it's all non-certified salaries. So while we do have a reduction of two para professionals, we also have the addition of the three safety and security officers in the budget as well. And then also.
So that's in that line? Okay, because that, that line didn't tie to, I couldn't figure which ones in the detail it would tie to. So I couldn't figure out.
So 112 is all your non-certified, so you've got your custodians, your maintainers, your clerical staff.
I got that, but that number isn't the total for all the non-satisfied. It's not total for 112. It's some subset of things in 112. That's why I couldn't make a match, 27.
27.
Yeah. So I'll talk to you after, but that's just, I was just trying to figure out what else was in that bucket because it didn't, it was clearly some subset of buckets within 112. And, because 112 itself was as much bigger as like 1 in some of them. So the increase. So I was just trying to figure out what was there and why that one, which seemed to be more like special ed paras. Yeah, and it's not, obviously. Yeah, it makes sense.
Well, the other thing too that we, we want to keep in mind is this board has been very good about trying to make market adjustments to salaries. And, and so we did see some pretty significant changes with regards to our wages for paraeducators, clerical staff, custodial staff. So even with a reduction of, of positions, you're still going to see an increase just because of the, the wage increases, so. So you had asked a question about the PPS expenses related to tuitions. Are the services for the students factored into the tuition? Are we paying additional for services beyond it? Yes, it's, the answer is yes, we're paying for services beyond. It's, the, the way that I would explain to this in the exact same manner, that our base tuition for the Columbia students is not inclusive of specialized services, right? There's additional costs associated with that, so. So the, for tuition lines, 563 and 564, you'd asked a question about the, the shift in the public tuition. So the, for tuition lines, 563 and 564, you'd asked a question about the, the shift in the public tuition. So if, if I'm, if I'm remembering correctly, it's, there was a change in how the, is it, the state required a change in how things are classified. And so while you'll, while you'll see a significant change in the public tuition, you're also seeing a relatively significant change in the private tuition. But I think if you look at the difference between those two numbers, that's that savings that Ms. Hartwig talked about with regards to our out-of-district placement costs. And I think the question about the extended school year has been successfully answered in a much better way than I could have, so I appreciate Ms. Hartwig sharing that information. With that, if there are any other questions, I can do my best to try to answer them or obviously I can always, I always encourage board members to reach out to me via email. And I, when I get a question from an individual board member, the response would be provided to all board members. Yes, sir.
May I have the budget book?
Oh, I was absent. Absolutely. Yes, I apologize.
I might have questions if I had something for you. I'll advance.
I'm going to, I'll just...
I didn't, I'm sorry.
I don't think I have any notes in mind, I'll just give you mine and then I got extras upstairs.
Okay.
I just got to write all my...
When are we getting our budget?
It occurred to me.
My fault, I was sick last week, so I don't get it.
We appreciate you not coming in here when you're sick.
Yeah, we all appreciate that.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Does that feel like I'm in trouble?
All right, then, do we have a motion? Oh!
My, my question would be to, to the board. So we have, we do have another budget workshop tentatively scheduled for next week. I can't remember. Yeah, Wednesday, thank you. In the past two years, we have not, have, have not had a need to have that conversation. We'll obviously have future budget conversations as we go through the next couple of months. But I just wanted to make sure that there was clear direction for us as to whether or not there was a, a need to have another budget. Because that, that, that went as scheduled for two purposes. If there was a need for it or if there was the need, thank goodness I didn't have to cancel school today, but to, to either cancel school and we wouldn't have this meeting. So if I could just get a sense of what people might want.
I, I don't think that we have to schedule it right now.
No, I don't think we need to.
I am thrilled with that.
I have not made my way entirely through the budget book, so I may have more questions, but I can send them an email.
Okay, be great.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion to adjourn?
So no.
Gabe? A second? Mike, Sharon, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anybody opposed? Have a great night.
Thank you, everybody.